I am calling this meeting to order. Clerk, as soon as you're ready, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Here.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Here.
Notary?
Here.
Rabel?
Here.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Here. Pledge of leas.
Pledge of leas and rights apply to the United States of America and to the public for which stands foundation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Sunshine.
Pursuant to requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the 30th December 22nd, 2022 edition of the Bevel Times of Mr. Arlego. The Sunshine Law was complied with by adopting it forward into the press, posting it filed with the municipal clerk. The annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each regular meeting. A copy of this annual meeting notice has been posted on the town website and also on the voting board.
Report of the manager.
Good evening, everyone. A somewhat brief today. First, I want to start off by letting members of the public know that we did have a scheduled public hearing tonight. Unfortunately, the initial correspondence of the public hearing was on an Excel sheet. When it was transferred to the PDF, which is a legal sheet, a letter sheet size versus a legal size, it was sent to the paper without the time, place, and date, because that was the last paragraph which didn't get picked up. When it was brought to our attention, we had no choice, so we re-advertised. It is for June 27th. The budget that were... the budget hearing is the same exact budget that was introduced last month. We spoke to DCA. DCA has no concerns with the delay, even though it's pushing it back a month. But it's important to know that the budget that was introduced, the same exact amount, is going to be represented at the public hearing with no changes. I know the mayor has some announcements, so I want to make sure I don't step on those announcements. Summer camp, our summer camp has been a topic of discussion. We started registration. We have over 20 kids in the first week, which is a good indication. And, you know, the first week does require the first initial pay. So, you know, if there was any concern about, you know, charging this year, it doesn't seem like that's going to impact our camp, which is a good sign. We do have some exciting news coming from the pickleball court that the mayor is going to speak about. And the other item that I want to let everybody, as a reminder to the council and to members of the public, our next meeting, which is June 13th, is Student Government Day. It's a day filled with representatives of student government body coming in for the day. We start off with a nine o'clock department head meeting. Every department head is assigned a student. Members of the council, I realize that most of you work, so if you can't make it here during the day, maybe you can make lunch, because we do have a lunch scheduled at Menida's. They're sponsoring a lunch for us. Judge Joe Angelo is accepted to be our guest speaker. He's going to have a great conversation with the students, give them a little pep talk about going off to college and making some right choices. And then, besides a full day of activity, which is, you know, we're going to talk, the engineer for school number nine, Plantown Park, will be here to discuss what we've done so far as far as going up the bid twice. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to avoid because the numbers came in. So we're going to talk about some alternative measures to maybe to avoid that contract, maybe a compromise. So the students are going to be involved in that meeting. We'll probably do that meeting here with the screen and have a luncheon. And then the most exciting part of the day, hopefully, is we'll see the students come back and actually participate in the council meeting on the 13th. So it might be a little tight at the dais, so we'll put some skinny chairs there between the bigger chairs. And we're going to try to get the members of the council to actually sit next to their representative. I can already see that the town clerk could probably read the opening public act. Town manager can give my report. The mayor will never let anybody get his report. But other than that, we look forward to...
My designate handle public commenting?
Yes.
How to do that?
So I look forward to June 13th. Certainly available for any questions or concerns.
Questions, concerns for manager.
Through the chair, just one quick thing. Anthony, I want to thank you for the crosswalk up by Wendy's. I got a quarter bucket coming down. They both work, man. Work is beautiful.
So manager. Anthony, I know you've mentioned the budget hearing. I want you to give an update on that. You did that. Elevators, can we get an update on the elevators in the building?
Yes. So we were hoping that by four o'clock today, our elevator would be back in service. Our maintenance elevator company, they were probably hit probably by eight this morning, and at four o'clock, they were still working. They're hopeful that it will be back up and running tomorrow. In the meantime, we try to accommodate members of the public by going down to the first floor if they need services. We try to do it that way. And we also have the police elevator, although that person would have to be escorted by a police officer if it really meant to use that elevator. We have a contingency plan in place as well.
Okay, moving on. So next on the agenda is the report of the mayor, starting off with past events. Actually, today, we had Walk to School with the Cop. I saw some of those photos on social media. It's always a big hit. Thank you to our police department for always being involved in the community. This past, I'm sorry, on the 16th, it was the last day to vote, register to vote for voter registration. And that's it for past events. Upcoming events, Monday, May 29th is Memorial Day. We will be having our annual services at the Dutch Form Church at 11:00 and 12:00 noon at the Veterans Memorial. Information is out on social media and our township website. Always one of my favorite events of the year, June 3rd, Community Bike Ride, again hosted by our police department. I believe the meet is 10:30. Check the website, because I think you have to register in advance if you can. And a great guided tour by our police department. We have motorcycles out there. We have bikes out there. We shut down the streets and bring the children on a three-plus mile tour in the township and go through the park. Excellent event the last couple of years, something I look forward to. The same day, I believe the same day, are we doing that, June 3rd? June 3rd, the same day after the Community Bike Ride will be the official opening to our pickleball courts. Two brand-new pickleball courts will be open at the municipal stadium complex. I don't know all the details yet, but I'm told the manager is working on a program that might include some hands-on lessons, trainings, maybe type of a clinic for those that will be interested, and potentially we're bringing in a professional pickleballer for that. So that'll be June 3rd. We don't have flyers or information on the website or social media yet, but I would assume that's forthcoming. Manager mentioned Student Government Day. It's going to be our next council meeting, which will be June 13th. Manager also mentioned our budget hearing will be the following Tuesday, the following meeting, which is June 27th. And I'm told that in July, or maybe even August, will be our next motor vehicle event here at Inbellable with the motor vehicle trailer that's here to process licenses and do all kinds of great stuff. When that date is locked in, we'll definitely have it on the website and social media. A little bit of news, I did receive some communication from our commissioner, former freeholder, county freeholder, now county commissioner, Mr. Carlos Primeros. Something I've been asking our Essex County administration for probably since I've been mayor is just for some little TLC at Bellville Park, which is part of the Essex County Branchbrook Park Complex. Seems like every year I see highlights of different municipalities having their county parks rehabbed and therefore hosting summer concerts when the county does a great job with that. I've been making inquiry after inquiry for that and received some excellent news from Carlos that Bellville Park is slated for a complete overhaul. That's going to be turf, parking lot, all kinds of great stuff going to be going on there. Probably going to be drawing up plans late this year. I would look for construction to begin for next year. To Bell, speaking of Essex County, two Bellville residents in the past couple of weeks have won Essex County awards, one for a fishing derby and one for a garbage park contest. Information's on our websites and social media. The Green Team, not to be outdone, I did collect a check a couple of weeks ago, but the Green Team was once again awarded another grant, so congratulations, Green Team and everybody that works on that. Bellville Police Department will be participating in click it or ticket, May 22nd through June 4th. Please make sure you are wearing a seatbelt. Summer camp applications, as you heard from the manager, are available. Summer jobs are available, information's on our township website. And as you probably know by now, starting in August 1st, tax-awarded departments will no longer be accepted cash, be credit card or check only, I believe. Speaking of water bills, low-income water assistance program is a very good program, and the threshold for income is not all that low. So if you know anybody or if you yourself need some support for the water assistance program, it's there. Do not forget, Zumba and Tai Chi yoga are still happening every Tuesday and Thursday. And last but not least, always check out our library, especially in the summertime, for some great ESL programs. That's it for my mayor's report. Next up, we have approval of minutes, combined conference, regular meeting of May 9th, 2023. Second, we have motion made and second, per call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Communications. A, Stormwater Management Study RFQ results are in. B, Plantown Park improvements, we went out for our second bid, those results are in. C, the Silver Lake Civic Association is requesting to close Heckle Street from Lawrence Street to Geraldo Street from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday, August 6th, with a rain date of August 13th for the Silver Lake Association block party. D, Lilian Torres is requesting to have the Puerto Rican Fly Braising Ceremony in September. Speaking of which, we also received confirmation that on September 13th will be the Bellville Police versus the Puerto Rican Police. That's now become an annual game. Maybe we could somehow coordinate the fly braising with that. E, the clerk's office, along with the Bellville Police Department, ABC Unit will be hosting on Wednesday, May 31st, an ABC Summit for all licensees in the township. And last, the Township Bell received a $2,000 grant, a sustainable jersey grant funded by the PSCNG Foundation. Next item on our agenda is ordinances, ordinance for possible adoption and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinance for the Township of Bellville, County of Essex, New Jersey, Chapter 8-6A, Schedule 8A, four-way stop sign intersection designated. I need a motion to introduce for possible adoption.
Motion to open public hearing.
Open public hearing. Motion to introduce, a motion to open public hearing. Second, we have a motion made and second to open public hearings. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. We are now open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Do we have anybody with a question about this ordinance or a comment? Hearing none. I'll attend a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption. Second, we have a motion made and second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 15-23 is adopted.
Yes, Dean should be on the record. Okay, ordinance number 15-23.
He might be above that.
He's not on that.
He should be above.
Dean, hear ya.
Dean, hear ya.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, ordinance 15-23, ordinance for possible adoption and ordinance approving the First Amendment to the financial agreement by and between the Township of Bellville and 91 Terry Street Urban Renewal LLC. I need a motion to open public commenting.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. We're open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this order to this ordinance only? Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. I'll keep this really short and simple. This particular financial agreement is for the large residential complex on Courtland, between Courtland, Geraldo, and Terry Street. It's 115 units. This amendment seems to essentially boil down to a penalty for the developer for delays in completing this project by March of this year. And if I understand the verbiage correctly, for each additional month that he is delayed in completing it beyond March of this year, he's being assessed a monthly penalty of $17,500. My only question is, what happens if he is delayed beyond one year? Inside of this, it talks about those six months, then in the next three months, and then the final three months, but what is the contingency if he is delayed beyond one year in completing this project?
Dean, our redevelopment council on the phone, he drafted the ordinance. I will say that that project is scheduled according to the developer for at least September, October of this year is what he believes. But Dean, can you answer what happens in the event we go beyond 12 months?
Yeah. Good evening, June 1. This amendment is an amendment to existing plans. In the original plan, the town has to extend the, where the project, if need be. The terms of this can only go out on the, if at the end of that one year period, the development is not finished, you can either extension, extend the construction period longer, either for payment or not, if a reason for this stage, for instance. Or alternatively, you can terminate the unnoted if the financial reason is not corrected with this script noted.
I'm going to ask Mr. Martino to step in as well. Hey, Dean, can you call in on the, on a different line, please?
Mr. Sheldon, what Mr. Donatelli said was, after that year-long period, which is what we could have done now, after that year-long period, you can extend it again for consideration, or you can terminate the redevelopment, which means then even total protections and so on and so forth. Yeah, so the township could have done that now, but obviously with COVID and supply chain issues and all that other stuff and conditions it's in now, township can do that, negotiate this type of penalty provision, and hopefully it gives incentive to get it going, because everybody wants it.
It does seem like you're playing hardball now. You're starting to ratchet up the penalties for the delay, and I was just curious what happened as if, if each March of next year, and this project is still...
You saw, you saw it did with Washington that year, too, penalty provisions, and now we're, redevelopment team is putting teeth in the agreement so that we don't have, the township doesn't have those issues of not completing it when they say they're going to.
We already have two six-figure checks by way of payments, two different redevelopment.
I do remember that as the previous administration was on its way out, they apparently rescinded the financial agreement for this project, but then the miscreant took over and you...
Wrongfully, and then we reinstated it.
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else to this ordinance and this ordinance only? Mr. Frantantoni.
Good evening. Is there anything in this amendment that is allowing him to expand the project beyond the 115 units?
No.
All right, because he'd been acquiring properties on Quarter Street, and he's been evicting the people. In fact, one gentleman, I don't know, he didn't show up tonight, but he's been there the last two meetings, he's been calling me. He just threw him and his family out on the street, told them to get out immediately, and another...
I believe there was also a sizable payment that was made to that family as well.
That is correct.
Right, but the question is, why is he throwing the people out of existing rental units?
To answer your question, this, this ordinance has nothing to do with expanding the project. Anybody else to this ordinance and this ordinance only? Hearing none. I'll attend a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion made and second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 15-23 is adopted.
Next ordinance, ordinance 17-23, ordinance for introduction and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Bellville, Essex County, New Jersey, Chapter 8-18, entitled Handicap Parking Spaces, 8-16, entitled Handicap Parking Spaces. Need a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion made and second to introduce. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 17-23 is introduced.
Order 18-23, ordinance for introduction and ordinance for the Township of Bellville to acquire by negotiated agreement an interest in real property located at 211 Washington Avenue and designated as Block 7701, Lot 21, on the official tax map of the Township of Bellville, Essex County, New Jersey, for public parking and related uses. Need a motion to introduce? Second. We have a motion made and second to introduce. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance...
I say yes, too.
I'm sorry.
I say yes, too. You skipped me, you skipped Councilmember.
Did I?
Yes, anyway.
I apologize.
Next item, public commenting. Need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion made and second to open public commenting, clerk, overall.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Strombergh?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes, we are now open for public commenting. I'm going to ask you to please raise your hand. When I call upon you, just come forward, speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak on what we all believe is township business.
Can I have the individual state your name and your address?
Sure.
I'm starting to get confused who's who now.
You should be learning who's who by now.
I should, but...
It's always, it's always the same people. Okay, we'll make sure.
I have the Vincent's and the...
We'll, we'll, we'll get it. We'll even spell the Italian names for you.
Thank you.
Anybody? Mr. Frantantoni.
Good evening, it's Vincent Frantantoni.
Thank you, sir.
Not Frank.
Address, please.
What's your address?
129 Mount Prossfield in Bellville. Gee, I was going to say, thank you, but he left. I was going to say, what a pleasure. We finally have all seven council members, figured they could make it tonight.
He got down last time as well.
He went to the best.
Yeah, but he left early. We brought the handicap space at 196 Washington Avenue, handicap space, the tenant moved out, so we can have the sign moved and put a meter in that spot, 196 Washington Avenue. But we could have another parking space on the avenue. I just, why can't we award the contract on Plantown Park? It came in too high.
It came in a million dollars over than what we thought. We went out for a second bid, came out the same exact dollar amount, 2.9 million.
Okay, so some of the things I think we may be able to do in-house, like years ago, we did a lot of things at direct house and that. Just, just I called at the last meeting, said that doing the date trips in part of rec program, it's never been done before. Maybe too young to remember, but when I was in office, we did date trips to the rec department, went to the circus, we went to the museum, and we had a lot of other activities. We had two direct departments, we had baseball games with the parents and the coaches against the kids. So maybe we can introduce some of that stuff that had never been done before. And finally, I brought up about a year ago, when you come in from the parking lot, I don't know if any of you got tunnel vision, don't you see both sides of the building, the green mold that's on there? Can we have somebody with power washers spend 45 minutes, an hour, and get it cleaned up? I got nods last year, and it's still there, getting worse.
We're not the ones to do it, Mr. Frantantoni. The person that's not nodding is the person writing it down.
Okay. What we need beyond writing it down, we need somebody, send somebody to clean off what looks disgusting. That's brief. Maybe we'll set a record, get out of here at 6:30 tonight. Thank you.
That's good. Got four minutes. Mario.
Address is 95 Bell Street. Mario, Mario's new. R O Z, R O Z. Yeah, I have a question. On the ordinance that you just approved for the amendment, I noticed that this is the second time that you're doing an amendment. Why hasn't there been an amendment on that property that's been being just renovated on the corner, you know, the Jolge Airetrix? How is it possible that this guy's been renovating this building for seven years or something, and he's not, and he's just getting away with it? I mean, these guys are all building these buildings in a quarter of the time that it's taken them to renovate it, so...
I wouldn't, by any stretch, categorize it as getting away with it. There is ongoing talks and potential litigation.
Okay, that answers that question, litigation. All right. The other thing I was wondering, you said that you're no longer going to accept cash. What happens if someone insists on, is it a law that they cannot pay cash, or it's just a policy, in case somebody ever challenges it?
Spin challenge, spin challenge, what's...
Okay, okay, what challenge? Okay. Now, I was just curious about that, because, you know, somebody's going to say it's a legal tender.
I've asked the very same question.
Okay, so I got my answer on that one. On the ordinance that for introduction, did you get an appraisal done on that property yet?
I believe this authorizes some of those small miscellaneous fees.
Okay, so we'll see at the next meeting. All right, the last thing, you're appointing somebody to the planning board on number PBCDE. Is that any council member's particular appointment? Because I see it's being the regular members, not that you're moving an alternate.
Zoning board, that was the zoning board. We did that last meeting, but the title was incorrect. This is just the correction of the title.
No, no, but what I'm asking is which council member sponsored the individual? Here we go, Casarelli. Okay, no, because I was wondering who the individual was, and I found out that he works for Exit Realty, where you have your real estate license, like his door happened to be yours, but at least he came up and corrected it. Thank you.
He's a realtor. Realtors are...
No, but I'm just wondering, why, why wouldn't you make that person an alternate and make him work his way up like everybody else, instead of just putting him in as a regular?
He's just, he's filling the unexpired term.
He's just filling the unexpired term.
Wait, wait, too many, too many people called. Can we answer?
He's just filling the unexpired term.
No, I know, but I just.
All right, number one.
Anybody else in public comment? Mr. Sheldon.
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. I want to thank everyone for finally getting Little Street finished. It was recently striped, so it looks like the project is done. But one remaining thing that really should be done now that all the paving and infrastructure work has been completed are trees. Before the work began, all of Little Street was essentially denuded. Every old growth tree, even fairly young trees, they were all, all felled. So we have now basically a barren street. And I noticed this seems to be the trend in our township. Whenever there's road work done, once it's finished, there's no plan to, to plant trees. On my street, Floyd Street, Floyd Street was renovated in fall of 2007. In the fall of 2008, the town did plant trees, a combination of maple species. But it's been 15 years, and a lot of those trees now need to be trimmed. And I brought this up in the past. Marie has spoken about this over many years, about having a shade tree commission. There's such an emphasis on green team. Can we do something about having a, a regular attention devoted to the township's trees, putting trees in where they've been cut down and trimming them properly? The tree in front of my house is now, the branches are almost touching my, my home, and I really do need that tree trimmed soon, because otherwise it's going to start doing damage to my roof. But, you know, since I'm not at the best of terms with this council, you know, I probably should hire somebody to, but I can't do that, obviously. It's a town tree. You can't have your own person do the trimming. But I would appreciate if some attention could be played to making this township a little more green as far as trees are concerned. Over the last few months, I've been asking on a regular basis, can something be done to allow the public to use the reserved parking spots in the back of the building after 6:00 p.m.? Parking now is at a premium because of the restaurant next door. You've got a whole swath of parking in the back south-northeast corner. Those parts, those spots are generally open after 6:00 p.m. Waiting for some attention there. Bit picky matter here, but the flag, the American flag, it's on the wrong side of the room. According to all of the rules that I know of, in a room like this, the American flag is supposed to be on the left side. It's supposed to be the first flag facing the audience. You're actually showing the American flag disrespect by having it in the third position. So the next meeting, could you please put it in the first position on the left?
I don't set the room up, but I'll make sure Mr. Icono gives 50 lashes.
All right, well, I would move it myself if, if need be. But the last thing I wanted to ask about the budget hearing. Last week, you posted a notice on the township website that the hearing for the budget would be taking place on the 13th. So, you know, I understood Mr. Icona's discussion earlier tonight. He said that there was a problem with the noticing. The hearing was supposed to take place tonight, but it had to be delayed. It looked like the delay was going to be the 13th of June, but now it's already been delayed another two weeks.
I believe it could have been the 13th, but because we're having the student government here, we decided to push it.
I was leading up to that. That's when you announced earlier tonight that you were having the, the students here. It would be a little bit difficult to have a public budget hearing that night with the students.
I would love them here for it, and their parents.
It would, it would further their education to see, you know, one of the critical functions of this governing body, which is the public hearing on the budget. But all things considered, it's probably best to wait to get them out of harm's way and do it at the end of June. So, all right, that's, that's it for, for tonight. But again, please, if something could be done about trees in this township, we really need to start paying attention to replacing the trees that have been lost in the township over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public comment?
Hi, everybody. How are you? First of all, I want to say it's great to see everybody here today. Frank Fales, 72 Continental. First of all, I want to say it's great to see everybody here today. As we're heading into Memorial Day, I wanted to leave the council with a very interesting note. Throughout many counties in our state, Burn County, Monmouth County, a lot of towns on their streetlights, their main streets, have banners on the avenues promoting their township's veterans. And I think that's something that this township should strongly consider. I think as we go into the holiday, that's really celebrating and remembering the sacrifices that have been made for this country and our freedoms, that we really consider while we're beautifying our township, you know, efforts that really pay tribute to our veterans in Belleville and our amazing history. So this is something I really think we should consider. This is something that our neighbors do, and I think it's really something that would benefit Belleville. And I just want to thank everybody as always for their hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public comment? Hearing none, seeing none. Just a motion to close, and then let's go. Okay, close. Motion to close. We have a motion made, and I believe second. Motion to close public comments. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Stumble Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes. Just along those same lines. We do name the streets after them when we have events like that. So that's part of our way of honoring events, as well as we are, I think, one of the only Purple Heart families around, so. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. I have nothing. Remove? No? Let's take a motion to move the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. We have a motion made and second to move the consent agenda. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Stumble Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda's moved. Out of the new business, you have Resolution 138 2023. This is a resolution establishing a reserve for preliminary plan expenditures.
So we were talking about for the fees for the 211. Who put this on?
Mr. De Maria.
A little late, a little late to the package, Mr. CFO.
Yes, I apologize, man, but it's unnecessary of the sort.
Lashes.
I'll give him a lash from the manager.
Ten.
Make sure it doesn't happen again. Do you need a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion made and second to move this resolution.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Stumble Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Resolution 138 2023 is adopted.
Okay, next on our agenda is executive session. In a moment, I'm entertaining motion to go into executive session. Once that motion is passed, we do need to clear the room. The purpose of going to executive session is to discuss the BME unit proposal. No action will be taken while we're in executive session. Once we exit executive session, all we will do is come back into our public meetings simply to adjourn. No action will be taken after we go out of executive session. So without further ado, I do need to clear the room.